I'd like to call the regular sessions being in order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Ramonick.
Here.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Here.
Commissioner Seewy.
Here.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Cosseboon.
Here.
May I please stand and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, I think you said the regular sessions is work session.
The work session, yep. I had that up on my screen as the regular session, and I meant the work session. Thanks for putting that out, Brock. This meeting is being conducted in accordance with the Oakland Public Meeting Act of 1975, was advertised, posted, and made available to the public as required by statute. The municipal clerk is directed to include a statement in the minutes of this meeting. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none, Mayor.
Presentations?
Presentation item number one, presentation by Urban Engineers on Millville roadway safety projects.
Good evening, everyone. I have a presentation that's going to be projected over on that screen. Can you, do you want to turn around? Can you see it on your screens, or should I? You can just turn around?
We have flyers in front of us.
All right, great. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Justin DiBiase. I'm a project manager at Urban Engineers. Been working on the two projects in Millville that I'm going to talk about tonight with you all. As you can see, it's High Street and Third Street and Wheaton Avenue, working with City of Millville, Cumberland County, and through the SJTPO, South Jersey Transportation Planning Organization. Just get my laser pointer here. Okay, got that. So, the agenda, I'm going to talk about both of these projects. Thank you. High Street and Third Street and Wheaton Avenue project. Give you a background of how we got to tonight, where we are in our current design project, and also the existing conditions of the two roadways, some of the things we looked at in terms of data, and then also go over the proposed improvements and seek your, you all's feedback on the proposed improvements here. And we'll go through what happens from tonight and next steps and kind of where we are as far as how far are we away from construction and things like that. So, project background, in 2022, I don't know who in the room was involved with this, but Cumberland County adopted the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Action Plan through years of work that this included safety analysis, project selection, and concept development. This was a group effort with the county and all the municipalities and Urban Engineers to identify crashes and look at data and prioritize safety improvements throughout the county. And the two projects that we'll talk about tonight came out of those two, came out of this effort, I should say. So, in 2023, the federal funding was secured to advance the projects that came out of the study. 2024, the preliminary engineering phase began, which commenced with survey efforts, field walks with local stakeholders, and it's currently the end, we're currently in the end of preliminary engineering, which we consider a 60% design level. And that's why we're here tonight, to seek feedback on some of the improvements that we are proposing. So, just a reminder, this kind of guides us, our purpose and need for the project is to provide safety improvements through the design and implementation of multimodal and traffic calming solutions through these corridors. The need is pretty evident when you look at the crashes. Over the years that we looked at, there were 153 crashes within the High Street project limits from the years 2018 to 2022, which is a five-year span. 79 crashes occurred within the Third Street and Wheaton Ave. project limits during the same timeframe. And these improvements are necessary to achieve the target zero commission goal of eliminating traffic deaths and serious injuries in New Jersey by 2040. So, first, I'll talk about High Street. Go through High Street, and then I'll focus on the other project here. As you all are very aware, our project limits are starting on Main Street, heading north past the Lavoy and ending just north of Harrison Avenue. It's about a little over a mile in length, as you can see in the highlighted red area. I'll mention, too, that the Broad Street intersection is not part of this project. It's part of a separate project, so that is the one gap in this project corridor. The existing conditions, it's considered an urban major collector road, commercial core, 25 miles per hour posted speed limit with a two-lane cross-section, and just included some photos we took at the field walk that, which was conducted at the end of 2024. So, focusing a little bit more on the crash data, those 153 crashes, which is a lot for only a one-mile stretch of road, eight of those crashes were pedestrian-involved crashes. The severity, luckily, there were no fatal crashes, however, there was quite a few injury crashes. You could see three suspected serious injury, 15 minor injury, 39 possible injury, and 96 no apparent injury crashes. The predominant crash types, almost 50% were right-angle crashes. You could, we usually see right-angle crashes at intersections, so either the signalized intersections along High Street or at the unsignaled intersections. 16% rear-end crashes, 12% same-direction side swipe crashes. So, some of the proposed improvements that we're including in our 60% design are pedestrian safety improvements, including curb extensions. So, this is an aerial shot of one of the projects that we did. Basically, curb extensions, if you can see up here, yeah, the pointer's showing, it takes the curb and extends it into the roadway and basically where the parking would be, they're not allowed to be within an intersection, but it extends the pedestrian and it shortens the pedestrian crossing distance, so they don't have as far of a distance to cross High Street. Also, this is beneficial for pedestrians for visibility, so a lot of times we see accidents when either pedestrians can't see cars because of parked cars or because of the cars can't see people waiting to cross the road. So, all in all, it's a benefit. And also, it's been proven through studies that cars tend to slow down when these curb extensions are introduced and the shoulders are reduced at intersections. So, it's a traffic calming measure as well for traffic to try to reduce speeds through an area such as High Street.
Sure, in terms of bump outs.
Yes. Yeah, we call them bump outs as well. Curb extensions, bulb outs, bump outs, same thing. Also, a two-way left turn lane, this is just for the one section north of Foundry. I'll show a picture of that in a couple slides, but what this is going to do is some of those rear-end crashes where people are waiting to make left turns and people are on their phones or just not paying attention, or it takes the left-turning vehicles and, you know, obviously puts them in the middle and in the left-turning lane and gets them away and reduces some of the rear-end crashes. Some of the other improvements, we just show here, this is Vine Street, an example of one of our curb extensions. Also, I want to mention Vine Street, one of the things that came up during design was we wanted to look into putting a traffic signal at Vine Street because of the volume and because of the accidents. So, we went through signal warrant analysis, and because of the high number of crashes and for the volume, it did warrant, it did warrant a signal. So, part of our 60% plans will be installing a signal at Vine Street now. We also looked at, since we were going to be installing a signal at Vine Street, the signal at Mulberry, is that still warranted? Should that possibly be removed? But ultimately, we decided that was not prudent, since if we were to remove the signal, that would probably introduce more safety issues at the Mulberry Street intersection. So, our plans now have a signal at Vine Street and a signal at Mulberry currently, and also the signal here at Harrison. This is what I was, the two-way left turn lane, this wide swath of pavement that we have for this section of High Street, repurposing some of that pavement to add in left turn lanes on High Street, which is not currently there. We're still able to provide bulb outs, bump outs, you know, curb extensions for the pedestrians while adding left turn lanes and also having these small median islands so that as a traffic calming measure to try to slow down traffic. Few other things we're going to be doing is we're going to be repaving the road, too, as well, and while, as we do that, we'll be installing raised pavement markers to better delineate the lane lines during the nighttime. Pedestrian scale lighting, we're looking at for all of the pedestrian crossing locations. This is just a graphic that shows, you know, the typical width of High Street south of Foundry versus north, where it goes from 38-foot width to 66-foot width, which is, which our design actually, we have here, kind of see up here, we could still maintain, we're still maintaining the two lanes of traffic, a center-left turn lane, and we're able to take this northern curb and take it in a little bit and still provide parking on both sides and turn some of this wasted space to some green space and also give back, you know, a two-way left turn lane while still maintaining the parking and everything there. So, we think this is a win-win. And also doing the curb bump outs as well for pedestrians. So, another thing I wanted to mention, mid-block crossing. We have proposed between Broad Street, I'm sorry, Powell Street and Depot Street here. When the field walk happened, we noticed a high, let me go to, there you go, circled it right there. We noticed a high number of pedestrians in this area. Just skip ahead here. The nearby businesses and parking lots generate a lot of pedestrian activity on both sides of High Street. There was a crash history in this area, four crashes between the two streets there. One involved two pedestrians. So, what our plan calls for now, and like your feedback on, is what's called an RFB, rectangular rapid flashing beacon. So, we use these at mid-block crossings. Pedestrians can press and activate the flashing yellow, the flashing yellow lights, and vehicles have to yield to the pedestrians in the crosswalk. This is what we're proposing for, you know, for this mid-block crossing here.
That's just the one mid-block crossing.
That's just the one mid-block crossing we're at, yeah. I'll go back here, right here. And I also have a PDF of, if you want to look at the whole plan set, I have a, this is just snippets of the plans, but I have a whole roll plot, too, on this computer if we want to look at them. So, also, I forgot to mention here, in this stretch, you could see that there is no parking for a certain, a pretty good stretch from, in this area. We're giving the road a road diet, just to neck down and reduce the shoulder in this area since there's no parking and to introduce traffic calming and try to slow speeds down through this area, especially with the pedestrian crossing there, trying to manage speeds through there is important. Some of the other improvements I'll just touch on is we're going to be repaving that stretch of roadway, curb ramp improvements, ADA improvements for all the intersections, drainage improvements, not, as it relates to, as we're redoing some of these curb lines, we're going to need to consider drainage, we'll be connecting into the existing systems that are out there and making sure the grading all works out. Refresh of the signage and striping that's out there. Also, for High Street, we don't anticipate any right-of-way takings. The only right-of-way will be temporary easements to construct driveway tie-ins and any limited grading that we need to do. So, those would be temporary in nature. Right now, we don't anticipate any utilities relocated. That's one good thing about when you're doing bump outs, you're working, you know, in towards the road, not so much the other way. So, no utility relocation is anticipated currently. And then also, we'll be doing the traffic signal, so not only adding the signal at Vine, but also redoing, reconstructing, and making compliant the signals at Mulberry and Harrison. So, that's what I had for Broad Street. I have the Third and Wheaton, but we could stop to discuss any questions or anything about High Street now.
I have one. How many parking places are we losing? It looks like maybe at least four per intersection.
So, we're planning on maintaining as much as out there now. The only ones I'll say that we're losing now is at cross, at crosswalks, there is a statute that you have to be within, you can't have any parking spaces within, I think it's, the state law is 25 feet from the crosswalk. So, those would be the ones that we potentially be losing. But all of these bump outs, they tie back into where the parking already is. So, we're not looking to remove any parking like that. We're just, at the corners where you can't park anyway is where we're putting the bump outs at.
So, you're saying we won't lose any parking places?
I can, I can get you exact number, but we're not looking, yeah, we're not looking at.
If you get me within four or five for the whole thing, I'm happy.
Yeah, and one of the things, one of the things we were looking at, at Vine Street, was what are some of the other things we could do? And one of the issues we saw on Vine Street was the site distance, so people coming up on Vine that are trying to cross High Street don't have enough area, not enough distance to see to try to make the turns, and a lot of those right-angle crashes were people not being able to see.
Yeah. I'm not saying we shouldn't lose them, we just have to figure out how to replace them.
Yeah, we talked about it, we talked about it with the engineering department, and ultimately, we said we could, if we remove those parking, you know, you could improve the site distance, but ultimately, we decided those were too valuable to the businesses and wanted to put the signal in instead of losing those, those commercial, you know, parking spaces and residential, so.
With the addition of the Vine Street lighting fixture being installed, will that mean then all the lights will be synced on High Street? That they are not alternating and by traffic?
I wouldn't say.
Or are they going to be signal activated, as in when a car is going to cross over High?
There definitely will be detection on the side street, so they'll know when there's somebody pulling up on the side street so that they can get the green light. However, as far as them all being interconnected, I don't have our traffic engineer here, but I know that the closeness it is to Mulberry Street, those two intersections are likely to be synced because they're only, I think, 500, 600 feet apart.
Correct.
For the whole corridor, I'm not sure if that's in the scope of the corridor, because the signals are so far spaced out. So, I think those two definitely will look at syncing those two.
Okay.
To make sure you can kind of get that throughput when you have the green light
What's the proposed timeline of start and end?
Yeah, so I have, we're doing preliminary engineering now. We're going to be seeking out, and I have a slide on this at the end, public info center that'll be open for the general public, probably in the next few months. Then we'll enter in final design with SJTPO, that'll be next year, and then we anticipate construction 2027. So, the beginning of 2027, we anticipate getting out there. That's what the current schedule shows.
Got it.
Is there a timeframe from start to finish?
The, for the length of construction? We will put together a construction schedule. I don't have it, I don't have it right now, but this isn't a whole roadway reconstruction, so we're not going to be digging up the whole roadway. The roadway repaving is going to be two inches off, two inches on, maybe a little bit more. So, I don't see it being like more than a construction season. I think it's a lot of curb work, a lot of concrete work, a lot of pavers, signal work. So, it'll be a really good project, but I don't, I can't imagine it being. The other good thing about not reconstructing the roadway is they'll be doing work probably in the, either in the off-peak periods after the AM rush hour, they could do it at night, but it doesn't have to be a long-term closure or detour of anything, because that would severely impact, you know, the operations, so.
Is it just going to be the east side or the west side? Or is it going to be both sides as you go either north or south?
For the construction zones?
Yes.
What we usually do for this is we limit the contractor to work on one side of the road at a time.
Okay.
To limit the amount of, yeah, the impacts to vehicles and pedestrians.
Businesses, yeah.
Yeah. But we'll put that in the, you know, all the construction stuff.
One other question, how long is it going to take? Because, you know, like the bridge is impacting businesses in the area, and some of them are complaining, so.
For construction?
Yeah, for the construction phase.
Yeah, I don't have that construction schedule yet. I could say, as a rough estimate, maybe six to nine months, something like that. But we're going to, we have a team that we look at all of our quantities and all of our things that we're going to be doing, and we put together a construction schedule for the contractor to follow.
And I'm guessing you're going to move down the road, so you're not going to have everything.
Yeah, we limit them, we say you can only do one corner at a time, one side of the road at a time, so you don't have a giant work zone.
Okay.
You know? So, I can move on to Third and Wheaton right now, because I want to go through that, too.
I was just curious about that. Thank you.
Yep. And if you have any other questions on High, feel free to ask. Okay, so, Third and Wheaton is a county road. Show here our project limits. County road starts here at Main Street and then hangs a soft right, I guess, on Wheaton But our project location encompasses this whole area that I have highlighted here, which goes to G Street. This is also posted at a 25 mile per hour speed limit. It's an urban local, more residential, urban minor arterial road with a two-lane cross-section. So, the crash data for those five years, we looked at 79 crashes for the corridor, no fatal crashes, but there were injury crashes similar to High Street. 54 were no apparent injury crashes. So, the predominant crash types here, again, were, over half were right-angle crashes that could be attributed to intersections, and 15% of those crashes were rear-end crashes. Those were the two highlights there. Proposed improvements here, same as far as curb extensions. One thing I didn't mention was high-visibility crosswalks. These are these ladder-type crosswalks that are, that are easier to see from vehicles and highlight crossing locations for pedestrians. Also, raised pavement markers, we'll be doing here in these corridors. One thing that's different about this project than High Street is this traffic calming. So, one of the things during the field walk and some of the things we looked at were the crashes, and we noticed that over a lion's share of the crashes occurred on this, a lot of the intersections on Wheaton, on this skewed part, you know, most of the roads here in Millville are the grid network, but a lot of these intersections, because of the skew, we saw 61 total crashes of the 70-some crashes occurred in this area, kind of highlighted, raised red flags for us. So, we thought about ways, what we could do to try to better, better design these roads going forward as far as traffic calming. And there's some issues with the existing conditions. As I mentioned here, 33 are right-angle crashes at that, at these intersections. So, one of the concepts, the concept that we're looking at that was established from the study that came out of the study was diverting traffic up G Street and onto Third Street instead of using Wheaton Ave. as the, as the, as the straight through and turning Wheaton Ave. into a local road that can go towards G Street but not the other way and creating, diverting traffic that way to introduce more 90-degree turns and as a traffic calming measure and not have this skewed angle that creates a lot of these issues. If you're driving the road, you can see the site distance is more difficult on skewed intersections, it's longer crossing distance and introduces higher speeds for people coming from Third Street that make the soft turn and come straight down Wheaton. So, I have a few more slides on this. Also, Second Street is a secondary route that could be utilized for traffic to get around instead of Third Street as well. So, like I said, Wheaton would become a local one-way street that would go to G Street, and the traffic would be diverted coming from 555 up G and across to Third Street. You could see here, this is, you know, those three closely spaced intersections of Wheaton, D Street and Third Street at the top of that skewed, you know, it creates a lot of potential conflicts in such a small area by changing this and improving the angle of the intersection and creating Wheaton as a one-way down and teeing up these two streets. It creates a much better, safer intersection there and can help to reduce speeds with the 90-degree turns instead of the wide-open skew angle as it is now. This is a concept of with the curb extensions, this one, instead of having three closely spaced intersections, having the one intersection to the north and then the Wheaton Ave. intersection to the south, but again, this would only be one-way for Wheaton. So, even less conflict points for this intersection as it was previously existing condition. Some of the other improvements here, we're also going to be repaving that whole project area, doing the ADA and curb ramp improvements, drainage improvements, signing and striping refresh. We have one partial right-of-way take at the signal at G Street and Wheaton, just doing some improvements there for the signal, just a small parcel there, not a full take, just a small partial take. And some temporary easements is similar to High Street to kind of do some grading and some driveway adjustments. Limited utility relocation, only a couple poles we've identified that have to get relocated here, and that's at that signal at G Street and Wheaton. And also, the signal will be reconstructed and redone. For the, for the added traffic that will be, that that signal will be seeing, we have some improvements at that signal that, that will be constructed. I'm going to bring that plan up, but next steps, this is the slide, just kind of pertains to both High Street and this project. So, any feedback we get from this local officials briefing we can take to the, to the design team. Also, we're going to conduct a public information center for, for all the public to comment and view and voice their concerns or approval. And then also, we'll finalize the plans, and then we'll advance to final design, like I said, next year, and construction estimated beginning in 2027. Wanted to mention, too, before I bring up the other, the PDF of the plans, if you have any questions, there's, we have a project website. It's hosted through, SHTPO, we have a link here, it's active, anybody can, can look at it, check it out. Once we do the public info center, we'll have more information probably on there and a place for the public to ask questions. Does QR code work right now? We could just scan this, and that takes you to the website, I guess?
And your fact sheets in front of you also have it on the bottom.
So, there's, yeah, those handouts have it as well. All right. Let me see, can I bring up the PDF, roll plot? Okay. Bear with me for a sec. I scroll on this thing. I'll just use this. So, you, I think you have the, yeah, you have the plans in front of you as well, but this is just a roll plot of some of the intersections. And I'll just focus on the Wheaton portion here, but you could see all the intersections similar to High Street have bump outs for pedestrian crossings. We focus the bump outs on the roads that aren't stop-controlled, so it'd be Third Street, and then on, you know, on High Street, it's Wheaton. We bumped it out on the main streets, because those are the streets that have uncontrolled vehicle, you know, they aren't stopping there, so it'd be bigger conflict points for pedestrians and vehicles. Okay, so here's, here's that triangle, those three intersections here. Feel free to ask any questions now or chime in, I'll try to best answer your questions. Some of this predates me a little bit, my involvement with the project, but feel free to fire away. This is the signal that I mentioned, the tie-in point here at G Street.
I need to go back to the, for one minute.
So.
High Street, I have one more question.
Yeah, so, G Street, if you're coming up, you'd be going left or right here, or I'm sorry, Wheaton Avenue, left or right. Be adding this right turn here, this little slip, slip right turn that's not currently there, it's currently a really tight skewed right, right turn there. Also adding a longer left turn pocket for all the traffic that's going to now come up here and make a left onto Third from G. And the approach here, you could see, is one-way in. You can go into the intersection here, but it's not, you can't go through from Wheaton. You'd be directed up, right or left there. So, you know, Wheaton would be more of a local road, less, less speeds through there, and we believe there'd be a positive safety benefit as far as seeing those crash numbers go down. So.
Can I go back to High Street for one second?
Yeah. Actually, I have the, I have the plans of High Street, too.
No, I can just ask. So, when you go down High Street, we redid that, we milled and paved that about eight or nine years ago, I believe, right? So, when you go down there, you'll see a series of cracks in the street going across the street. Now, I know you're planning on milling and paving again, but I don't remember what was under there. Is there concrete under there or something that's causing those cracks? There's something there causing those cracks.
When I first started?
Yeah, so, what I'm getting at is when you do the end, you may have to do more than a mill and pave if you want it to last more than three or four years.
Three or four years.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, no, I appreciate bringing that up.
The original base may need to be worked on.
Right, there may be a problem with the base.
Yeah.
Something, but since we have final design coming up, we could, something we could talk about with SJTPO, maybe get a pavement design in our scope right now, because we were more focused on the, on the safety improvements, but that could, we'll talk about them and see if we could.
Yeah, I forgot about that earlier, I just remembered it, so.
Yeah. Something, but since we have final design coming up, we could, something we could talk about with SHTPO, maybe get a pavement design in our scope right now. Because we were more focused on the, on the safety improvements, but that.
Yeah, I forgot about that earlier, I just remembered it, so.
Yeah, yeah, I bet. Great.
All right, thank you.
Regarding Wheaton Avenue, that it's, I'm just envisioning, I mean, I travel that day on that road specifically every Thursday of my work week, and there is a, you know, a local business right on Wheaton Avenue, Zebbs. There's just a lot of cars that take.
Right here.
Wheaton to get, yes, that take Wheaton to get out to ma, you know, either, i.e. Main Road or then to Lincoln Avenue to go transverse into Vineland.
They're saying come, they come down this way, or they come down this way?
Yeah, they're staying on Wheaton and they're just staying, going all the way through Wheaton towards the, you know, 55.
So they would still be able to come down here, this is Zebbs right here, right? This is Zebbs?
Yes.
So they would be able to come down here and get to the signal this way and come out here. But just to get, to get to Zebbs, they would now have to go up and come through this way. So getting out to that way would still be, you wouldn't, it wouldn't be Wheaton, but you could come out and come down, and this is, this is Fourth, yeah, Fourth Street down here. This is tied into the signal right here. Zoom in there.
There was just a lot of traffic.
Yes, it is.
There was also, I'll mention it, traffic analysis, they did traffic counts during design and put in the traffic models and, and made sure that the existing signals could handle the, the added traffic to the, these other signals and roads and stuff, so.
Interesting.
I know, yeah, I know at the public meeting, it'll be a big point of discussion for everybody, so. We'll come, we'll come armed with all of our traffic. We, we usually do models too. We could show like a, a video model of how it's going to pan out with projected traffic volumes like in the PM or AM and PM rush hour.
Interesting. Any comments?
No, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
All right, thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
Public comment on agenda items only. If anybody from the public would like to comment, please come to the podium, state your name, address your concerns, resume those concerns approximately five minutes. See none or closed public comment on agenda items only. Discussion of commissioners. Commissioner Hewitt?
Nothing right now, Mayor.
Commissioner Seawi, go ahead.
Yeah, real quick, so you guys know the county is repaving part of Broad Street. So between Seventh and Buck, we can use UEZ funds to pave that. If you guys wish to proceed down that road, I think we're estimating we're going to get about $3 million next year. That won't cost anywhere near $3 million. That'll require coordination between engineering, water, sewer, for utilities. I think utilities are okay there, but I'm not 100% sure.
It's on a football field to Broad, to Buck.
To Buck Street, yes. Then there's a little piece left that, I don't know, maybe we, time comes and we want to take care of that some other way, from Buck to Columbia, which is a couple hundred feet. So if you guys want to proceed with that application, we'll proceed with it. If you don't, let me know, we won't bother proceeding.
I had an opportunity to talk to you, engineering. I guess there was just a project that we were previously trying to go through, federal funding, and it was kicked back.
Well, yeah, and the federal funding was kicked back, so.
Now, is the scope of work, like if we go through the UEZ, the same as?
Yeah, pretty much. We can do, we can put the ramps in there if you want or whatever, we can put everything in there.
Traffic, I think you're just.
I don't know if we'll get any traffic signals with it, but.
Now, if we obviously use the UEZ money, we could use UEZ money for multitude of things. But we have other things like the municipal aid grants, like for.
Well, I don't know if we have any municipal aid grants for that, but we can always apply them somewhere else. You know, if we use the UEZ money, the other money we can put towards other projects that maybe aren't in the UEZ zone.
UEZ is only for UEZ zones, not if we don't use.
So I don't know, I mean, our engineer, our assistant engineer is here, so I guess you could probably answer that question.
I think we should definitely visit it.
I'd look, yeah, I'd agree to look into it.
We get, you know, we need the cost estimate from, from engineering before we do anything else. And I know sewer hasn't scoped all those lines, most of them they have, but not all of them yet. I don't know, you know, we could check with the water department, see how that utility's doing there. And we can use, you know, the UEZ grants allow us to use for infrastructure, so I don't know if anybody's tried to get that, if it needs to be replaced there, but we can certainly give it a shot.
Let's start to legwork up on the sixth floor.
That's, that's why I'm bringing it here, see what you guys want to do.
I approve.
I'm good.
Okay, and I'll tell Sand to put the grin in then. You good? All right, that's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Nothing at this time.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yeah, on the agenda, we had a couple capital items. One of those items, ordinance number four in the first reading, just wanted to bring that up to table, just so we could have the opportunity to work with our CFO and our water and sewer departments to reevaluate.
Item number four?
Just, just to reevaluate, how to fund it, right? I mean, we're going to proceed with the project, whether we go bond or some other way, but that's what we want to look at, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay. I would like to make that motion.
Can we table that down in the work session? Yep. Second.
Motion second on tabling ordinance for the first reading, item number four. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Seawi?
Yes.
Mayor Ramen.
Yes.
That's all I have.
Okay, that was easy. Lots of events over this weekend, saw lots of residents, elaborate on it more as I share with the rest of the commissioners. That's all I have at this time. New business, see none, public comment portion. If anybody from the public would like to comment now, please come to the podium, state your name, address your concerns. See nobody, I will close public comment portion. Any closing comments?
No.
Resolutions?
A resolution authorizing closed session for the following matter, discussion on SOA union contract negotiations, contract negotiation and attorney-client privilege.
Make motion?
Second.
Motion second on resolution. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Seawi?
Yes.
Mayor Ramen.
Yes.
We shall be back. Did he just say it was hot in here?
Last meeting, wasn't it?